Good morning. We are going to begin this morning with an invocation from Dr. Imam Imad Inchasi of the Islamic Society of Greater Oklahoma City. Dr. Inchasi.
If you would join me in an adoration of prayers. Lord, you created us from a single pair, from a single soul, that of Adam and Eve. You made us into tribes and nations so we may know one another, serve one another, and aid one another. Make us worship you today, Lord, by servicing your creation equally. Make us not deviate from the path of paradise again. Make us see one another as children of Adam and Eve. Lord, guide us to understand that although we might have come on different arcs, and we might have crossed different oceans, help us realize that we are now together in the promised land. We pray to God Almighty to guide us to a city where no longer cowers in its darkest corners, shivering of the fear of one another. Lord, make our city a place of peace with no atrocities, no brutalities, no homicide, and no horror for the eyes to see and the hearts to bleed. Lord, bless the people who are here today. Bless our elected officials. We pray that these men and women will humble themselves to the sacred task of governing for all the people. We pray for wisdom, not rhetoric; generosity, not indifference; and we pray for justice, not patronage. We pray for our leaders to be gifted in diplomacy, blessed with character and integrity. Leaders who know our security comes from relationships of trust and communication, and not from fear and intimidation. Lord, for our part, as citizens, give us the patience to give our leaders a chance to govern with mercy, compassion, justice, and love. Let us support sincere efforts and celebrate wise compromise. Lord, guide us to a unified city, our own Jerusalem, the city of God amongst the red clay of our land. We ask you in thine divine merciful name to answer our prayers. Amen.
Councilman Stonecifer, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please, thanks to the life of the United States of America, to the Republic of Texas, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and it is always a joyous occasion when we get to welcome a new member to the City Council. It also means I'm no longer the new guy, so I like that. And so I would like to invite, under item 3A, Pastor Lee E. Cooper Jr. to this podium, and I believe he will be sworn in by the Honorable Vicki Miles LaGrange. Yes, of course, anyone that Pastor Cooper wishes to have join him is most welcome.
Pastor Cooper, would you repeat after me? I, in your name...
I, Lee Cooper Jr.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...obey...
Obey...
...and defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution...
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
And...
And...
...the Constitution...
The Constitution...
...of the State of Oklahoma.
Of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly...
That I will not knowingly...
...receive...
Receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly...
...any money...
Any money...
...or other valuable things...
Or other valuable things...
...for performance...
For performance...
...or nonperformance...
For nonperformance...
...of any act...
Of any act...
...or duty...
Or duty...
...pertaining to my office...
Pertaining to my office...
...other than the compensation...
Other than the compensation...
...allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
...my duties...
My duties...
...as councilmember of Board Seven...
As councilmember of Board Seven...
...of the City of Oklahoma City...
Of the City of Oklahoma City...
...and trustee...
And trustee...
...of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
And...
And...
...the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities...
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities...
Authority...
Authority...
...and the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
I know you signed your documents before we came in, and congratulations.
Pastor Cooper, we have a microphone if you wanted to say a few words. She's bringing it to you right now.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and Council and the City Manager, thank you for allowing me to have this moment just to say thanks to a number of people. First of all, I want to say thanks to my family for coming and sharing, my immediate family. I have my only granddaughter who is here, who is two years old, and so I'm excited to have her. Of course, she runs everything around the house. And then I have my entire family who is here, and I just want all of them to stand, all my family, if you would please, stand. Good to have you sharing with us on today. Then, all of my church family, I've got a church family, and I want all of them to stand as well, who have come out to support, and thank you so very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, what an honor it was to have the Honorable Vicki Miles LaGrange to come and swear me in on today. Thank you for taking the time out to come and be a part of this special occasion for me. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cooper, take your seat. morning. This is commemorating Park and Recreation Month, and I think we've got a pretty robust group of people who benefit from our Parks and Rec Department. If they could all join me, all the people that were with me this morning in the office and down on the steps, feel free to come on up here. We're very proud of our Parks and Rec Department, and we're excited at this opportunity to spend a few moments recognizing it and maybe to learn a little bit more. I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas July is National Park and Recreation Month, and Parks and Recreation Programs are a vital part of communities across America, including Oklahoma City. The Oklahoma City Parks Department provides green spaces and dynamic facilities and programs so citizens may achieve a high quality of life, contributing to the overall well-being of the community, its economy, and culture. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs provide citizens with exercise and wellness opportunities to aid in the prevention of disease, the building of healthy habits, and the improvement of their overall health. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs contribute to economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses and employees, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation Lands improve air and water quality, protect groundwater, provide vegetative buffers, and produce sustainable habitat for wildlife. Whereas our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, allowing children and adults to connect with nature through primitive and manicured landscapes. Whereas Oklahoma City recognizes the invaluable contribution of Parks and Recreation Department employees and volunteers, who help people relax, connect with others, and enjoy the many benefits of Parks and Recreation Programs and facilities. Now therefore David Holt, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in Oklahoma City.
Very good. Yeah, let's hear it for Parks and Recreation Month. I am joined up here by our Parks and Rec Director, Doug Cooper, and I thought maybe it would be appropriate for you to say a few words and maybe introduce also some of your staff that's up here.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a great privilege to be before you and getting this proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. This is what we do our business for, is these kids and other kids throughout the community. These represent our future baseball players and our future soccer players. Hopefully, we might even have some Olympians and some professionals coming out of this, but the main thing is we strive to make them better students in our classes so that they can go on to college and get a good education, and stay in Oklahoma City and perpetuate the great Oklahoma standards that we have here. I want to point out a couple of my folks. I've got Chris Hamilton here, who is our Superintendent for Recreation. He's the one that is steering the ship as it relates to recreation programming throughout the city. We have Grant here that has spearheaded our baseball. He's an example. He's a former professional baseball player, so you know we have quality instruction going into our children here in this community. So I just want to thank all of our folks that do everything for our people and the future of our city and the kids to get out and play during July, get out and play every month, but July is Parks and Recreation Month. So thank you again, Mayor, for Your Honor.
Thank you, yes. But hold on. I'm going to do something really risky, but I'm going to choose the child of a PR professional in hopes that communication skills are hereditary. Young man, what is your name?
My name's Emiliano.
And what's your favorite sport?
Baseball.
Yeah, yeah, what position do you play?
Uh... I don't...
Outfield, yeah, very cool. And is it fun? Are you having fun?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And though everyone is always welcome, all of our Parks and Rec guests are certainly also welcome to leave now if they wish, and goes for everybody else as well. Again, you can stay all day long, but if you want to move on with your day, now might All right, we have one other item under Office of the Mayor, and that is actually a presentation this morning, an economic development update by Roy Williams, President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, members, Mr. City Manager. Here I thought all these people were here for me. Congratulations, Councilman Cooper. Before I make my remarks, I just want to give all of you a heads up in the event you're planning on having lunch downtown today. We have about 25,000 guests downtown right now. They're all convention delegates for a major convention in town, so two requests, be courteous and be early, because the restaurants will be crowded. Since I last spoke to you in February, we made some pretty significant progress on a number of projects. I want to tell you about those as well as some things we're looking forward to. First, the Innovation District. If you read Sunday's Daily Oklahoman, you saw the announcement that Katie Boren has been selected to serve as the district's president and CEO. She brings many talents to the table that really give her the capacity we were looking for to accomplish some really aggressive goals that we have set out. She will immediately work to stand up the formal organization we've created to brand the district and to create the programs and activities that were called for in the Brookings Institute Plan, as well as the project for public spaces. She begins work July 9th, so right around the corner. We've been representing the city in a number of venues. I want to share with you several most recent. In April, about 50 of our members traveled to Washington, D.C. to meet with our congressional delegation, our five Congress members of Congress and both senators. And we had conversations with the Pentagon, as well as Air Force officials. These were conversations relative to infrastructure and the continued growth and expansion of both Tinker Air Force Base and Mike Maroney Aeronautical Center. Those were our chief topics. In May, we led the Oklahoma City presence at the Annual International Council of Shopping Centers, called RECON, a meeting in Las Vegas of more than 35,000 retail, real estate professionals and dealmakers. During the show, we had about 24 meetings with key national developers, brokers, and retailers regarding growth and opportunity in our market. In addition, we do an annual lunch with the mayor of our local area brokers. So Mayor Holt, thank you for leading that delegation and for hosting that luncheon. And earlier this month, we led the Oklahoma delegation presence at the Bio International Organization Show, which is a worldwide meeting of bioscience leaders in Boston. The delegation that Oklahoma had there numbered about 45, and we hosted more than 240 pre-arranged meetings in our Oklahoma Bio exhibit. This is the 18th consecutive year that we've led a delegation to this very important show, and actual deals were done in our booth. We're working now, too, to plan our annual next intercity visit, which is currently scheduled for September 6th and 7th to Sacramento, California. In Sacramento, we're going to examine how they are collectively planning around land use, around transit, around industry, around workforce, and housing by looking 50 years into the future. We're also especially pleased that we're going to have the opportunity to meet with the former chancellor of the Washington, D.C. Public Schools, Michelle Ree, one of the nation's most widely recognized figures in education, and she's going to present her outlook to us on the nation's educational system and her current work that she's leading with regard to a network of California charter schools. We're also going to learn how they've recruited and cultivated new industry, new employers, and use their agricultural heritage as an economic development tool, all while embracing a giant employer that they have, just like we do, in that state government. Additionally, we're going to learn from the mayor's office and their economic development leaders about what they're doing in recruiting and retaining tech talent by being in the shadow of San Francisco. Switching to air service, we continue to work with the airport on attracting and promoting new nonstop service. We're currently marketing the new nonstop service to Philadelphia. Last month, we were happy to support the airport's proposal to Southwest Airlines for nonstop service to Washington Reagan, which was accepted and announced, and these flights begin in November, and we will begin shortly before that, marketing that route as well. This now brings our total airport direct service up to 30, and there are only a few other destinations remaining that are really on our targeted list for direct service. In the area of criminal justice, the New Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is picking up and moving forward where the task force left off. Through collective efforts, we've reduced our jail population down to about annual daily population of about 1,600. We were at 1,850 in my last report to you about three months ago. All of this from a high of more than 2,600 on a daily basis, so about a 40% reduction. I want to really thank the city because they're a big part of this reduction through their policies and procedures, along with work from the Pretrial Services Committee and a very dedicated Judge Cindy Trong. We've also hired an executive director for the council now, Timothy Tardibono, and his presence now will allow us to really speed up all of the work of all the various committees and the implementation that were in the task force recommendations. We've also already seen some success at the legislature on a bill that the task force recommended and is supporting that allows special judges to release inmates on their own recognizance, commonly known as OR bonds. And also due to another bill passed last session that we supported, I've been named the chair of a task force on fines and fees, and look forward to the House naming its committee members so we can proceed with that task force this summer. With regard to new companies and job creation, we continue to have a very strong pipeline, and a number of companies have announced expansions or new locations since the last time I visited with you. The largest project, which you're well aware of, is the Amazon Fulfillment Center at Will Rogers Airport. That will bring about 1,750 jobs and about $140 million in capital investment. CACI International, out of Arlington, Virginia, is bringing 550 new employees to West Oklahoma City. This international company, just by coincidence, is chaired by a native of Oklahoma City. He was also the founder. And the average wage for these jobs is right at $65,000. In an existing company, DuraCoting, is an expansion, adding 49 new jobs at a wage just over $57,000 on average. So year-to-date, we worked with companies to announce 5,717 new primary jobs and capital investment of around $400 million. And the really good news is we have about 60 active projects that we're still working on. With regard to legislative success, even though I mentioned a little bit, it's very difficult and challenging, but we did enjoy some key priorities this legislative session, including enactment of the teacher pay raise, which, while it was not perfect in its execution, it was a significant accomplishment. As well, we protected all of the economic and community development programs that we utilize in our economic development efforts. We achieved enactment of nine very significant criminal justice reforms, including a chamber-sponsored legislation that provides special district court judges clear authority to sign pre-release orders. Also, the Oklahoma Quality Events Act was extended. It was under Sunset Review. And we were able to obtain a repeal and veto of the $5 per night hotel motel tax that got enacted. Other successes included an improved and broadened Small Employer Quality Jobs Act, an initiative to help smaller companies, and legislation to provide state safety designation authority to ODOT, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, that will allow cities to continue receiving millions in federal transit funding, and legislation creating an automobile engineering tax credit, much like the aerospace engineer tax credit. The chamber also led a coalition of Oklahomans for Business and Property Owners Rights, a group of about 50 businesses, associations, higher education institutions, and law enforcement organizations that were established to oppose what we perceived to be some irresponsible expansion of gun rights. We worked with the governor and her staff to support the veto of Senate Bill 1212, which would have allowed constitutional carry of open or concealed weapons without a permit. Of the 83 gun right expansion bills that were considered in 2018, we feel no harmful legislation was enacted. And finally, the chamber has joined the anti-78, State Question 788 Coalition. This is not medical marijuana. We are opposed to this state question because of the impact we believe it will have on Oklahoma companies and their ability to operate competitively in our state. So I will conclude with that and be happy to answer any questions if anybody might have one.
Thank you, Roy. Yes, is there any questions? Two questions.
Sure.
One, I wanted to, like hundreds of other states, municipalities, and counties, this council is trying to consider what our response to the opiate crisis would be. And in reading about it, I'm struck about the economic impact of this crisis. And you can Google "economic impact of opiate crisis" and come up with lots of good studies, but basically in the hundreds of billions of dollars, estimated at least $50 billion a year of economic impact, $10 billion a year in cost to employers from absenteeism. Most of the overdoses are people in their 20s, 30s, and 40s, so lost productivity, lost income tax, sales tax to governments, estimates of $1 trillion in economic impact over almost a 20-year period, and maybe another $500 billion when you factor in healthcare costs and criminal justice costs, which you alluded to. When you consider that Oklahoma City is ranked 12th in the country among cities in number of opiate prescriptions being abused at 48%, basically one out of every two prescription, opiate prescription being written, and 16th among cities in the United States in terms of the opiate abuse rate, I'm just wondering what you're seeing on your end in terms of impact to employers? You've talked about the potential impact of marijuana to employers. What are you seeing on your end in terms of the opiate crisis, in terms of the economic impact and the criminal justice impact?
Yeah, well, I think what's obvious, and that is that it's impacted workforce and availability of workforce, as well as it certainly has impacted the criminal justice system. So I can only just reiterate kind of what you said. It's having a significant impact on employers and thus on our economy.
Do you, I mean, I don't, you don't need to lean in on what, but let's just take like the state suits and the suits that are, if there was a large settlement, it looks, and it looks like there will be a settlement, that then would be distributed to cities. You think we could, that could make an impact?
Absolutely, yeah. I think much like the tobacco settlement...
Right.
...that it could be, you know, endowed and used in a lot of different areas, and that that's probably the best way that it could be.
Thank you very much. The second question. So Tulsa announced an Amazon fulfillment center, right, last week? So we're not necessarily going to agree, and I don't want to get into, I mean, I feel like Amazon's going to do these fulfillment centers in every major metropolitan area with or without an incentive, and we can disagree with that. I don't want to get into it. But can you just tell me what steps we take to try and protect ourselves from paying incentives when maybe a company is going to do something with or without the incentive? Are there safeguards?
Well, a couple of things. One, there's no assurance that it would go in Oklahoma City, goes in the metro area.
Right.
And the other thing, and there was discussion about this as this project was being unveiled, that not only would it be good to get it in Oklahoma City, but it would certainly be good to get it at the airport in Tolarit Landing. That's a thousand-acre new development, and if you can get a signature project early on into a new development, you create momentum to build out the rest of it, and it also provided the opportunity to put in some infrastructure. So, you know, I look at that as not just a project, but as a tool for helping us down the road in other economic development. Tulsa's, for instance, didn't go on the airport property, and, you know, this one could have gone to a number of locations, but I think there was much more of a strategy behind this as opposed to just simply winning one project.
Any other questions for Roy?
Just a comment, I guess. Congratulations on the groundbreaking for the convention center. That was...
That was a big day.
It was a big day. It was a big day. And just the energy and excitement about that corner and, and what is going to happen in the next two years was really palatable. But the, the job creation and the opportunities and the, it was just almost overwhelming to see what's getting ready to happen.
It was, yeah. And when you combine all of the other MAPS projects that come together, as well as the new Convention Center Hotel, it's going to be pretty phenomenal and really put Oklahoma City in a new class.
Well, I thought it was a great idea to bring the meeting professionals in and have them share in that experience and, and see the community rally around the project. It was.
There's a lot of buzz about the city nationally right now on that.
It was great.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Mayor.
That concludes Item 3. We'll now turn to Item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. I would entertain a motion on Items A and B. Got a motion and a second to receive the journal from June 5th and approve the journals from May 22nd and 29th. Cast your votes. Casts unanimously. Moving on to Item 5, we have requests for uncontested continuances. Mr. Couch.
Mr. Mayor, the one listed on your, on your agenda, Item 9R, is the opioid item from last time, and we're striking that, suggesting it be stricken and replaced with Item S. And the difference is that Item S clearly spells out that this will be done at no expense to the city. So that's the difference between the two.
Okay.
And then there's just one house this morning, but it shows up twice on page 29 under Item 9I1. Item B, 1444 Northeast 13th Street, where it's a deby-strickened, the owner has secured. And then it also shows up on Item 9J1. Item B again, 1444 Northeast 13th Street, and again, the owner has secured.
Moving on to Item 6, revocable permits. Item 6A, revocable permit with VI Marketing and Branding for the OKC Chamber of Commerce TRDC Volunteer Reception. And it looks like perhaps we have Robert Repola.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council. Yeah, we're throwing a party for the volunteers that kind of make everything happen that Mr. Williams was talking about. So we're having that next Tuesday at Kerr Park. It's kind of been moved around a little bit from what your MAP shows due to the construction finally starting there that they're doing. But we'll be there just from 4:30 to 6 o'clock that evening.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you guys so much for doing this. You throw great street parties between chilling and thanking the volunteers. We appreciate it.
That should be a fun night, and all of you are welcome. We'd love to have you out.
Great. Move for approval.
Got a motion and a second on Item 6A. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And we've now got Item 6B, a revocable right-of-way use permit with MTM Recognition Corporation to hold the Run for Recognition on June 23rd on Northwest 7th Street. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and.
Hi, I'm Mark Bravo, pinch-hitting from Mike Ketcher's side of MTM Recognition. He's out of town, regrettably, but I get to see what Mike feels like for a few hours.
Anything you'd like to share about the event?
This is concerning a race that is happening at my store, OK Runner OKC. It is 708 North Broadway. We've been there a year. We did this race virtually at the inception of the store opening last year. We're very thrilled that MTM wanted to bring it primarily because it, we think, infuses a lot of energy on a Saturday morning and more primarily. This race always, MTM Recognition and OK Runner are very big advocates of Special Olympics Oklahoma, and every penny for these seven years raised from the race has gone to Special Olympics Oklahoma. So with that, I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you. And of course, anyone who wakes up on a Sunday morning in April and watches the Memorial Marathon will recognize Mark up in, off in the commentator on KFOR. Councilwoman Sawyer.
Yep, another great event. Thank you, Mark, for putting this on and your longtime supporter of Special Olympics. We really appreciate it. Move approval.
And congratulations to you.
Got a motion and a second on Item 6B. Is there any discussion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, and all. Appreciate it.
Now we will recess our council meeting and convene as a different body, the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Councilman Cooper, when you were saying all those different authorities, this is one of them. We have, this, this body has the same membership as the council. Authorities and trusts have a little different responsibilities and powers, and so this gives us that ability. And we have a few items here, and I would entertain a motion for all of them at once. And I think we, under this, though, before we vote, we've got a presentation on Item F.
Annual Budget. Doug Dollar is here to present that to us this morning.
This is the annual budget, of course, for the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
That's correct.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, and I'm pleased to be here to present the FY19 budget for the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. The trust indenture for the OC MFA provides broad authority for the trust. The OC MFA has historically been used for risk management and insurance purposes, capital funding for IT, advanced funding of geo-bond projects, and for some general purposes that we'll talk about more in just a moment. The MFA present, prevent, permits these activities to benefit from multi-year contracts, allows for the funding of adequate reserves, and can be a source of financing for certain projects. So when we look at the budget overall for the MFA, it's $119.9 million. That's a 9.7% increase from the current year. The largest portion of the budget is for health insurance for city employees, and the contributions come from both employee and employer contributions for premiums totaling $73.9 million or 61.7%. IT funding is the second-largest functional area in the MFA at $14.9 million or 13%. This includes our multi-year contracts such as software maintenance contracts for various systems like PeopleSoft or SAP or other software packages the city uses. In addition, IT uses the OC MFA to purchase significant hardware such as servers and radios, as well as services, installation and maintenance of city systems. Workers' compensation and property and liability insurance are both managed by the Risk Management Division in Finance, and between them total $14.1 million or 11.7%. The city is self-funded for unemployment insurance, and a transfer to the OC MFA from the general fund provides $250,000 for this purpose each year. Using a revolving fund, advanced capital allows the city to begin work on bond projects before the geo-bonds have been sold. This allows for some design work or right-of-way purchases or other tasks in advance, so when the bonds are sold, the work is ready to be done quicker. The geo-bonds purchase the plans or the work that's been done from the MFA so that the funds are replenished and can be used on other projects. And finally, the general purpose category in the MFA includes oil and gas royalties from parkland that are used for park system improvements. We have drainage capital improvements from fees paid by developers and other miscellaneous purposes, such as contracts for cleaning up high grass and weeds and junk and debris removal from properties sited by development services. When we look at where the revenue comes from for the MFA, the largest portion is employee and employer health insurance premium contributions. Next is transfers from other funds, such as transfers from the IT Internal Service Fund or the Risk Management Internal Service Fund. Fund balance or carryover from the prior years makes up 18% of the funding for next year's budget. Much of the funding for the advanced capital funding for geo-bonds comes from fund balance. And other significant areas where fund balance is used include IT capital projects and oil and gas royalties on parklands. And the other, again, are small sources made up of interest, fees for development services, cleanup, and a number of other miscellaneous items. Finally, when we look at expenses in the MFA by category that the Municipal Budget Act calls out, you'll see it over 86% fall into the other services and charges category because so much of the MFA is about providing service through contract, such as health insurance or IT software maintenance agreements. So the other categories, again, all less than 6%. So with that brief overview, we'd be happy to answer any questions about the MFA budget.
On one of the graphics you talked about or showed, 18% fund balance, which I guess is a carryover from the previous year.
Right.
Is that normal to have that high a figure, 18%?
Well, especially like the, the capital funding that we have for the advanced A and E and the geo-bond projects is really, it's, it's sitting there until it's used and then gets revolved back through. So that's, that's about an $8 million piece that, that revolves through there. Also, on the IT capital projects, a lot of those projects end up taking longer than they expect, and so they'll put the money over there, and sometimes there will be a higher-than-average fund balance at the end of the year because the projects are still in process. We've got some significant funding there with our radio system, upgrading the, the radio system, and there's a, a large balance in the IT system at this point as they're working through that project. So IT syst, IT was the biggest increase in fund balance this year.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Doug? All right. Thank you, Doug. We have a motion and a second on all of the items under the OC MFA agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will cast our votes. Passed unanimously. We will now adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And we also here have several items, as well as a presentation from Doug, but if anybody has a motion, we'll go ahead and dispose with that. Got a motion and a second on all the items. Doug, if you'd like to make a presentation, this, of course, is regarding Item E under this agenda, which is the budget for the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
So like the OC MFA, the, the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority or the PPA, trust indenture provides broad authority, but generally, the PPA has been geared more to supporting operations, such as the golf courses, the Civic Center, Chesapeake Energy Arena, and the Cox Convention Center, as well as financing for improvements at the fairgrounds. So when we look at the FY19 budget for the OC MFA, it totals $60.8 million. That's a decrease of 11.5% from the current year. And as indicated on the chart here, you can see fairgrounds makes up the largest portion of that at $29.7 million, almost half the total. And that function is primarily composed of debt service on the revenue bonds at the fairgrounds paid by the hotel motel tax. Second largest category is related to MAPS contracts, MAPS-related facility contracts at $15.4 million or about 25% in total. Golf courses are the third largest at $10.8 million. A significant change this year is in the Civic Center. Because the foundation, Civic Center Foundation is taking over operations at the Civic Center, our revenues will no longer flow through the OC PPA as they have, and so that's the, the result of the, that's the decrease that's going on in the OC PPA. You will see, there's a small piece still for Civic Center. That's the general fund will be supporting the foundation. That makes up about 1.5% of the total. We also have some small portions in the PPA for sports facilities improvements, economic development, natural gas, contracting, and our general purpose expenses. When we look at where that revenue comes from for the PPA, transfers are the biggest source at $21.21 million. The vast majority of that is the hotel motel tax that's, again, flowing through the PPA for debt service at the fairgrounds, on, on revenue bonds at the fairgrounds. Transfers from the general fund is also a significant revenue source. We've broken that out on its own. And the most significant piece of the total from the general fund goes to support operations at the Cox Convention Center and Chesapeake Arena through our contract with SMG. And fund balance is the second-largest revenue in the OC PPA at $15.8 million or nearly 26%. And the largest area with fund balance is at the fairgrounds, the development fund there that makes the payments on the revenue bonds. The payments build up in that fund until it comes for a semi-annual payment to bondholders, and so that creates a significant fund balance at June 30th. And then golf course revenue accounts for $9.5 million or almost 16% in total, and other sources make up about 5.5%. So when we look at the categories, again, those municipal budget act categories, you'll see it's a much broader distribution here within the PPA than the MFA. And again, contracts are one of the, multi-year contracts is one of the benefits of using a trust. And the two largest expenditures there are in the other services and charges, which is our primarily our contracts, and then also capital projects, which together comprise over 55% of our expenses. Other services and charges account for $21.1 million or roughly 35% in total. The biggest piece of that is, again, our contract with SMG to manage the Cox Center and the Chesapeake Energy Arena. Capital outlay, $12.8 million, includes fairgrounds improvements as well as projects at MAPS-related facilities. Debt service is primarily for the fairgrounds bonds, but there is also some debt at the golf courses that's being repaid. And transfers at $13.5 million or 22% in total are mostly the transfer of hotel motel tax revenue that's in excess of our debt service requirements back to the hotel motel tax each month. And the only area in the OC PPA with personnel cost is the golf courses, and their total is $4.6 million for personal services or 7.6%. So again, it's a quick, brief overview of the PPA, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Great. Any comments or questions for Doug?
David, not for Doug, but I just wanted to recognize Teresa Rose Cook, who's here for the Civic Center Foundation. This really important amendment to our contract with them, effective July 1st. Civic Center Foundation will take over operations of the Civic Center. And it, you know, is sort of a, a new opportunity, I would say, for, for everybody. And there's been a tremendous amount of work done. I really want to recognize the committee at the Civic Center Foundation, but also our municipal councilor's office. And Elizabeth Gray, who's the executive director, have worked really hard to get to this point. Yep, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Doug. All right. Any discussion on any of the items under the OC PPA agenda? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously. We will now adjourn OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There is one item here, Claims and Payroll, that does require a motion, which I would entertain. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We now adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and reconvene as the city council. And we have the Item 7 under the council agenda, the Consent Docket. I don't believe there are any scheduled presentations, but I would entertain a motion or any request to pull items out.
Move those out as subject to individual consideration.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there anything that anybody would like to individually discuss?
Two things I wanted to.
Oh, I thought we were so close, Mick. I thought we were.
I thought you were. There's a couple going up. I wanted to mention 7D and then 7AC.
Okay. Is there anything else? Well, then we'll just go right to you, Mick.
All right, I'll be quick. 7D is in agreement with the Center for Education Center for Employment Opportunities.
I am so sorry. I have a cold today, and I am not 100% on my game. This is with the Center for Employment Opportunities, and it's a contract that we did on a test basis last year. It was very successful working with our utilities and public works, providing a work crew. And these are for an organization that offers transitional work to, you know, folks that are coming out of the prison system and facing barriers to employment. So it's a really great opportunity for us to partner with them, and I very much appreciate it. And then 7AC is just a shout-out. This is the public art for the MAPS Senior Health and Wellness Center, number one. And it looks like we're great projects and fencing along the edge of the, the property. And so we appreciate the work of the committee.
Great. Great. Thank you. Yeah, I certainly echo your support of CEO on Item D. And then I would also mention that we only have a 1% for art on MAPS 3 because you authored the ordinance 10 years ago to do that. Is there any other comments on the Consent Docket? All right. We have a motion and a second, so seeing none, further discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Now we move all the way to page 23, the Concurrent Docket, Item 8.
Move those out as subject to individual consideration.
Got a motion and a second. Does anyone want to pull anything out? Seen no such requests. Is there any discussion on anything under Item 8? Seeing none, we will cast our votes. Passed unanimously. And now we have arrived at Item 9, Items requiring Separate Votes. I am going to pull up Item 9M because Dr. Goodlow of the Medical Control Board has requested to speak earlier than scheduled on the agenda to accommodate scheduling conflicts. And so I would welcome Dr. Goodlow to come to the podium and discuss anything he wishes to in regards to Item 9M, which is Emergency Physicians Foundation Medical Control Board Budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. It's always a privilege to be here with you, especially when I am bringing good news about the health of our EMS system. I just want to share a few comments with you this morning as I request your approval for our fiscal year 1819 budget for the medical oversight component of our EMS system. With me this morning is Dr. Curtis Knowles. Dr. Knowles is a pediatric emergency specialist with significant EMS experience as well. He's here at the OU Children's Hospital just down the street. Also, our executive assistant, Jennifer Jones, and David Howerton, who is our Director of Clinical Affairs for the Metro Oklahoma City Region. One of the things that I'm really pleased to, to speak with you about and frankly thank you for your support is the structure of our EMS system where medical oversight is a very integral component of the system, but it is independent of the agencies that, that we serve. This becomes very, very important. I'm sad to share with you that a couple of my colleagues this year, because of system design, have, have seen a great amount of instability in their EMS system where there have been changes in medical oversight for overtly political reasons and for reasons why. changes in medical oversight for overtly political reasons, and for reasons where, because of fractious relationships between medical directors and leaders in ambulance services and fire departments, there is a tremendous loss of experience and service in those systems. We just simply don't have that in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, because of the wisdom of the design of our system and your support of that. It has nothing to do with me as an individual, I have to earn the right every day to serve as your medical director, but because of the infrastructure that we have, frankly, I'm very free to speak freely about what is most appropriate for the clinical outcomes of patients. We just simply don't have to play politics with what we know will produce the best outcomes for our citizens when they suffer serious medical emergencies, such as sudden cardiac arrest, strokes, heart attacks, major trauma, those kind of situations. And I think a lot of that is not only due to your support from the governance oversight, but it obviously speaks to the quality of many of the leaders in our system. I continue to be very, very proud of our immediate past fire chief in Oklahoma City, Chief Bryant, and many of my colleagues around the country. Reach out and share with me instances where they have encountered him at various functions around the country now, as our national fire administrator, and I think it just continues to speak well for the type of leaders that we grow here in Oklahoma City. Obviously, Chief Kelly has done an outstanding job stepping in and taking the helm of the fire department. I really enjoy the relationship and the ability for very productive dialogue that I have on an ongoing basis with Chief Kelly and his command staff, particularly our EMS chief, James Blocker. And then I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment about what I see as a particularly positive move in the Emergency Medical Services Authority in the last year. We are absolutely blessed with the leader that we need at IMSA right now, Jim Winham. Mr. Winham worked in my office for three years, I know him incredibly well. I cannot think of a more ethical leader that could be at IMSA right now. I'm very proud to see him in that role as CEO and president. We've had a great year in our EMS system, extremely proud of the clinical work that occurs on the street each and every day. I do want to make one comment, referencing Dr. Shadid's earlier questions about the opioid crisis. There is no question that we have problems in the areas that we serve in Metro Oklahoma City and Tulsa. We watch this very carefully as it impacts our EMS system, our use of naloxone, the antidote for opioid overdoses, to the extent that they are truly life-threatening and impair proper respiratory mechanics and cardiac perfusion and survival from those type of situations. That is up about 15% over last year. That does not necessarily track, each and every time we give naloxone, does not necessarily mean that that person has a life-threatening opiate overdose, but it certainly means, in the eyes of very astute police officers, firefighters, EMTs, paramedics that are carrying naloxone, something is wrong with that person's alertness and their stability from a medical standpoint, that they have appropriate reason to think that it could be due to opioids. Most of the time that we do give naloxone, it does wind up being an opioid overdose, so it is concerning to see, you know, the use of naloxone on the rise. Apart from my work in the EMS system, educating our EMTs and paramedics on the seriousness of opioids, and making sure that when we are working with patients on the street in times of serious trauma, where they need some pain relief, they have a leg fracture, some type of really debilitating acute pain, we're very, very careful as to how often we are using opioids, and we have a tremendous accountability record of how we control those substances within our system, working very closely with the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and the Drug Enforcement Administration. So apart from that work in the EMS system and the work I do at the University of Oklahoma, I concurrently have the privilege of serving as the president of the Oklahoma College of Emergency Physicians. One of the things that we're working on as a state body with our national body, the American College of Emergency Physicians, a couple of bills that are working through the federal legislature, alternatives to opioids, and then also preventing opiate withdrawals while in emergency rooms, these are two bills that are working through the House and Senate right now, both designed to also highlight the dangers of opioids, but also find other answers to pain control in the practice of medicine beside opioids. So, Councilor, I really appreciate your interest in the topic. It is something that, you know, throughout the spectrum of EMS medicine and emergency medicine, although we are a very, very small segment of the opioids that are prescribed for folks, and obviously doing so on very short-term bases, we absolutely share those concerns, and we want to be part of the answer as well. So appreciate your interest and leadership on that. Just wanted to brief the council very quickly on those matters. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about our budget. Just as a reminder, this is not additional money that you are approving, this is already contained within the IMSA general operating budget as planned for 1819, and then also within the general operating budget for the Oklahoma City Fire Department. So just to clarify, these are not additional monies outside of those budgets that have already undergone review.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions, Councilman Shadid?
I'm grateful for your comments as well. I guess I'd ask the same question we asked Roy Williams, is if cities could come up with like a T set-like fund, you think there would be utility in that, both in terms of education and potentially treatment, kind of cleaning up the mess, if you will?
Oh, I think education is certainly always a valuable arm of the attack on this, if you will. There is a lot of interest in what we call MAT, medication-assisted treatment. Right now, when patients are coming to emergency departments in Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and frankly, all around the state, the sad reality is that patients that come in and say, "I am hooked on heroin, I'm hooked on opioid prescription pills, I need help," frankly, if those patients are not acutely suicidal or a harm to others, we really have very little resources at our disposal. Most of what happens in those encounters right now is to give them a list of some community outpatient resources, honestly knowing full well that even if they call at 8:00 in the morning, they're going to be met with someone that really cares on the other end of the phone, but they're also going to be met with the message that their inpatient treatment beds are quite full, they can be put on a waiting list, and, you know, good luck in the interim, which might be weeks, if not even, you know, two, three, four months. And of course, the crisis continues in that time. So we're very interested in the ability to be able to prescribe a medication from the emergency department, bufanorphine, suboxone, that could help these folks get on a very short-term treatment plan. The challenge with that approach still remains, we have to have some outlet to send them to once we start that therapy. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm very encouraged by the amount of dialogue that I hear. You can't fix a problem until you find a problem. We've definitely found this problem, and I am happy that we have so many people truly, sincerely interested in working on it. But I, to your point, I think education is always one productive strategy. If we can prevent anybody from getting on these medications, that's a win right there.
Excuse me, doctor, can you recall when you first began to suspect that opioids might be addictive?
Oh, we've always known of some addictive potential. What has been interesting to see over the last 10 years or so, there was a time when most of the opioids were illicit substances, such as heroin, sometimes street, attainment of prescription medications, some of these black market medications. Fentanyl is something of a lot of concern in people's minds. A lot of it comes in very small quantity shipments from China right now. And so I've been privileged to take part in some very upper-level discussions in DC with our Border Patrol Service, and even despite some amazingly high-tech ways to try to catch these shipments, you know, folks always have some kind of way of seeming to stay ahead of the curve, if you will, unfortunately. And a lot of this comes in very small quantities now. One of the things that we have in Oklahoma, which has really made an improvement in the number of opioid prescriptions that are being written by physicians and advanced practice providers, is a mandatory prescription monitoring system that is run by the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and Dangerous Drugs, it's PMP program. So for any physician, advanced practice provider, that is about to write a prescription for an opioid course of therapy, by law, they have to check that database to see if the patient has obtained a prescription somewhere else. And we do this, not only is it the law, it's a good idea, and we do this routinely, of course, then, in the emergency department setting. To nobody's surprise, we also routinely find people that come in and they say they've had an injury, or they're suffering from chronic pain, they're, you know, visiting the area, or they're just between physicians, whatever the case may be, and yet we find they've just had a prescription filled in the last 24 to 48 hours. And that, you know, gives us an opportunity for a little bit of an interesting dialogue, and letting them know that we're not able to then, you know, prescribe any further opioids that particular day. The effect of that program has certainly been driving the number of prescriptions down. We are seeing a little bit of a move back to some of the street drugs, such as heroin. People aren't able to get the pills that they once did. And so that brings a whole new concern, because of some of the infectious disease that can occur with shared needle use and issues like that. So it's a moving target, but it's one that I do think that we are keeping abreast of, and really honestly trying to find some answers for.
So there's a percentage of this usage that's illegal. It's not being prescribed, per se. People are buying some of these drugs on the street?
Oh, absolutely. It's, I will say, it's a little sobering as a physician, if you go online and pull up some of the bulletin board chatter, if you will, the degree of chemical sophistication that some of these people are speaking about on the internet absolutely rivals some of the most erudite discussion in medical schools today. It is, it's kind of scary, some of the chemical knowledge that's out there on the street. And so one of the flags we always have in the emergency setting, and I'm sure our colleagues in other specialties do too, is if patients are asking for certain opioids by brand name only. Brand name drugs can be sold on the street for higher than generics, and so that's always a little bit of a tip-off why someone would need the brand name versus, you know, the effective chemical itself.
I see. Thank you.
Doctor, I have a question for you. As it relates to particularly the database, is there a gap in particularly like the norm, large pharmaceuticals, prescription, you know, the larger ones, over and opposed to family drugstores who actually check the database? Is there a gap in really the performance and following through, making sure that the database is actually checked?
Sure.
And sometimes, you know, because of the larger, you know, box stores, that they don't actually do what the diligence that they should do in actually checking the database?
Right. So it's a very good question, Councilman. My experience has been pretty consistent across pharmacy types, how close they are monitoring this. It's probably not a surprise, just when you look at where prescriptions are most commonly filled, most of the phone calls I get back to the emergency department are from a very well-known retail pharmacy, or retailer that operates a pharmacy service line in their store as well, that are saying, "Hey, we're concerned, because we see this prescription, we think you probably checked the database, but just to double-check, we're finding, you know, another prescription here that you may or may not have seen. Is it okay to go ahead and fill that prescription?" Sometimes it's a private, family-run pharmacy that calls more often. I think it's just statistically because of where the prescriptions are getting filled, it's the better-known retail pharmacies. I think everybody is trying to work with due diligence on this. Is there ever a time where something slips through the crack? Probably, just because humans are humans. I can tell you that our US reps and senators are very well aware of these issues. One of the real champions we have in Oklahoma is in Oklahoma District Two, Mark Wayne Mullen, the east side of the state, and he is really championing a national prescription monitoring program database. There also, unfortunately, was a bit of an exclusion for prescriptions that were written within the VA healthcare system, that they were not a part of these prescription monitoring databases. So if a veteran had obtained some pain medication at a VA clinic or hospital, we would not see that in the civilian database. That has since been fixed, and I think that is obviously very important. We don't want anybody hooked on these medications, particularly our veterans that have served the country so well.
One final question on this topic. The question that we're going to address later, that hundreds of municipalities are considering in this multi-district lawsuit, is whether the manufacturers were, had a role in this. And particularly, one of the main targets of the lawsuit in Ohio is Purdue Pharmaceuticals and OxyContin. So I'm wondering, A, how much are you, you know, hearing people ask for OxyContin? And B, was there a role in the company promoting it as giving 12 hours of sustained relief, when in reality, they started to learn that it wore off faster, so patients would be in withdrawal? So then they would try and find ways to get more, you'd have ever escalating doses, and maybe that's what created the part of the epidemic? And then, once they can't get the pills, like you alluded to, they start turning to things like heroin?
Yeah, so there's no question that oxycodone, or by brand name, OxyContin, is a more potent opioid than hydrocodone, trade name Loratab, Vicodin, something like that. You know, as to the exact mechanisms of deliberations within Purdue, I would certainly have to plead ignorance of that. I have read several articles about Purdue. I have no doubt that, you know, in any form of business, profit can be a bit enticing, but I think, you know, when you're looking at profit in the medical realm, I just, you know, certainly feel a tremendous amount of ethical responsibility. Nobody begrudges somebody making some legitimate profit in the service to others, but not at the cost of selling your soul, or, you know, compromising ethics. So I think sometimes in our system today, the only way that you can ever really get the full answers, or at least close to it, is through litigation. And so I certainly understand why those kind of actions are afoot, and I just, I hope that we are cresting the hill, so to speak, and are going to see some continued improvements in this. It is encouraging that the opioid prescriptions are down, certainly including oxycodone prescriptions as well, but we've got to be careful that we're not just replacing that consumption with street drugs like heroin.
So if you had litigation, which have depositions, which so far we haven't had, and you could learn kind of how this can evolve, and maybe how to prevent it in the future?
I think so. I mean, I think it's just one of those, we may not get the answer outside of such a litigation course of action, but I hope that we would get the answers that we need and deserve through something like that.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Okay, well, thank you, doctor.
Thank you. It's a privilege and pleasure to be with you.
While we're on this item, I think we might as well go ahead and wrap it up. Is there any motion on item nine M? This is the budget for the Medical Control Board. We had a motion. Got a motion in a second? All right. Any further discussion on item nine M? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now go back to item nine A. These are ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval from the planning commission. We'll start with A1, a S.P.U.D. 1050 at 1628 and 1631 Northwest 21st Street. This would rezone R1 to the S.P.U.D. 1050. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed project in Gatewood, and I see the applicant is here, along with his representative. David, do you want to come talk to us? David, do you want to come talk to us a little bit about this?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here with me is Scott Loper, who is a developer and property owner. This is an action in which we are seeking to rezone these two lots to an S.P.U.D. to allow some higher density development. This is an area that falls under the urban medium classification of the comp plan. It was recommended unanimously by Planning Commission. After Planning Commission, we did have the opportunity to sit down with Councilwoman Sawyer, my client, as well as one of the neighbors who has expressed some concern. From that meeting, what we decided to do was reduce some of the density. So we went from 12 total units to 10. One of the main concerns from the neighborhood was the setbacks. The Gatewood UCD has very specific setbacks, being 20 feet. So by taking out one unit per building, we were then able to adhere to that 20-foot setback. The S.P.U.D. has been amended accordingly and resubmitted to staff. Perhaps we need to have an amendment to that on the floor to reflect the 20-foot setback, the reduction to 10 units, and then the addition of the requirement to go back to Planning Commission for what's called a specific plan application. The specific plan application will allow the Planning Commission, the neighbors, the opportunity to ensure that what we have proposed to building permits is consistent and compatible with not only the comprehensive plan, but more specifically, the negotiated S.P.U.D. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
David, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that signed up to speak on this? Okay. So I really appreciate the effort, Scott. Thank you very much for working with the neighborhood. We had a constructive meeting, I think, and the two very important things that David referenced that I would like to make sure we do get in the record is the reduction in the density from six units to five units per lot, and the agreement to adhere to the 20-foot setback. That was really important, I think, for the compatibility issues in the neighborhood. And the third piece is the importance of this specific plan review. There are still a couple of issues, you know, that I think the neighborhood has. One of them is that as there, was not any street parking allowed. The parking is on the ground level in garages, and so it causes a deactivation, if you will, of things on the street level. So anything we can do, Scott, to talk about, you know, front porches and stoops and, you know, the ability for people to be outside, I think is going to be really important. And I think there is likely at that specific review place for the neighbors to come have a little further input. But we're grateful for the compromise here, and I would move approval.
Second. Could you have a motion in a second?
Well, could I ask for just clarification as far as procedurally? So we would vote, and if it passes here, it will go back to the Planning Commission?
Well, not this application. The S.P.U.D. would be approved. There is a new function within the code called a specific plan application. And so what it would be is a separate application made through Development Services at such time that we're ready for building permits. There's a provision in Chapter 59 that requires us to go through PUDs and SPUDs prior to the issuance of the building permit to get approval of the specific plan. That only goes to Planning Commission, doesn't come back here. It is separate and apart from the ordinance that you'd be approving here.
So are there any protests currently or previously related to this development?
There were. There were two legal protests, three total, represented about 6%. I think the most vocal protester was Tyler Holmes, and that's who we met with. And he has agreed that the setback and the reduction in density were a positive step in the right direction.
So is he comfortable with them?
Yes, he is comfortable. Sorry.
Okay. But this won't come back to us again?
It will not come back to us. And, you know, I do need to say that in the area, this is a very residential area, lots of small bungalows, but there are several multifamily projects around it. It also faces onto Blackbelder, and I drove it 30 times. And there are, you know, the sides of houses that face onto Blackbelder, there are garages that face onto Blackbelder with small windows. It's not totally incompatible with the area. And I think the setback issue, you know, was really important to the neighbors, to preserve the 20-foot that is in the overlay for Gatewood.
Thank you.
So I think I need to move the amendments first, to include the reduction in density, the adherence to the setback.
The specific plan.
And the specific plan.
That's not a separate vote, right?
Yes.
Oh, it is? The amendments?
We're amending the ordinance.
Okay. So we'll have two votes, you're saying? Okay. So first, we'll have the vote on the amendment. Is that, is that what your motion was for?
That is what my motion is.
And that's what your second was for?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendments? All right. Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And then I would move approval of the ordinance.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second on the amended ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, Item A2. This is at 501 South Mustang Road, rezoning from C2 Shopping Center District to S.P.U.D. 1053. Councilman Mcatee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, you know, are you the applicant, sir?
Yes, Brent Williams.
Okay. If you would explain, because this has a little uniqueness to it, would explain what you're trying to do, and then we'll go from there?
Yes, sir. This is actually our second location. It's a board and brush. Board and brush is a woodworking site that you can come to and you can make wooden signs during a three-hour period. We kind of train you during the three-hour period how to make a wooden sign. We give you a specialized stencil with your last name on it, and during the sign, it's like a paint and sip workshop. Since it's a paint and sip workshop, that's why they're asking for the specialized thing, so they can do the wine at the same time that they're making the wooden sign. You get to pick your colors, you get to pick your stains, you get to make your entire sign just like personalized for your home. It's a little bit nicer than the painted thing that you do, because some of us aren't very artistic, so they don't come out very well. So I've had a lot of garage views of people that make like the painted things with the paint and sips, and they end up in the garage. But these will actually go in your home and be nice, and whenever they come out, and just have a perfect look to them, just with your colors. So this is something that, it's our second location. We have one in Oklahoma City, and this one would be for the Yukon Mustang Bethany area, and people from El Reno, so they could enjoy it there also. So hopefully, we can get going with something like that.
Okay. Now, while the woodworking is going on or while for that, you're going to want to do something with respect to some beverages.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Could you explain that? And Bob, how does this differ from a normal ABC type of environment?
Well, our current ordinances don't allow wine and beverages sold unless they're in a restaurant or a bar setting. And so we've done a couple of S.P.U.D.s that have allowed this specifically to that leased space, and this will allow them to serve without having to serve food or be a restaurant.
So this has been done before?
Yes.
Special?
There's been a couple of barber shops, hair salons that have done it, and it's similar to that.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Having no objection to it, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. We've gotten Item 9A3. This is at 12800 South Meridian Avenue, rezoning from S.P.U.D. 694 to S.P.U.D. 1055. Councilman Mcatee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? Can you, David, explain to the council exactly what we're trying to do here?
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a, it's an odd spud in that this has been residential, then it went to office commercial. What my client found was that there was no market for a one-off commercial or office that wasn't on a hard corner. My client owns and developed the neighborhood immediately to the east. Prior to filing this application, my client, which is Landmark Fine Homes, held a neighborhood meeting, alerted everybody within the neighborhood what they were seeking to do. They got no reservations or concerns from any of the neighbors, so we filed our application. The only issue that we faced at Planning Commission was the request that we limit the two lots to a single drive-off Meridian, which we did agree to. These two lots will back up to the pond, they'll share the same CCNRs that the rest of the neighborhood has, so it'll be consistent in its design. There was no protest at Planning Commission. The recommendation was unanimous by Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, sir. Unless there's any questions from the council, there aren't. Anybody sign up? This has been vetted and all agreed to. I move for approval.
Second. All right. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions for the applicant? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 9B1. This is an amendment to the master design statement to include a 15-foot landscaped buffer along the east property line, et cetera, et cetera. And then also, this will also be relevant to Item 9B2, an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2650 Shoal Avenue, rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial to P.U.D. 1682. Councilman Cooper, who knows a little bit about planning. By the way, there's no truth to the rumor that we simply appointed you because we already had a placard for you and it saved $4.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any discussion from the harsher?
Did anyone sign up to speak, Francis?
No. No one's signed up.
Okay. Well, I'm-
Move for approval.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Seeing no discussion, well, we'll cast our votes. This would be a motion in a second on 9B1. Correct, Francis?
Correct.
Passed unanimously. And then, Councilman Cooper, we'd also need a separate motion for 9B2.
Yes. David, would you like to speak on this?
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application to allow the sale of trailers. This is zoned I-1, so what we did is we maintained the I-1 base. We simply worked with staff, adding the uses necessary for this specific use. There was some question about a blue line. Our engineers are working with the Corps of Engineers as well as the city on maintaining the integrity of that blue line. There is significant tree coverage on the eastern side of the site that we will maintain. That's why you saw the amendment for the landscape buffer. It is unique that Dr. Cooper got to vote on this as a member of the Planning Commission and now gets to vote on it as a member of the city council. So there was no protest at the Planning Commission. On behalf of answering any additional questions the council may have.
There was no protest coming through the Planning Commission with this. There is R1 that backs up to it, but they're keeping the landscape buffer, which made sense, because there's no real idea of development anytime soon for this. Any discussion from council? I'll move for adoption.
Second. All right. We've got a motion in a second. Seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Cooper.
And now we're at Item 9C1 and 2. One ordinance on final hearing, rezoning 1201 Northwest 50th from R1 to S.P.U.D. 1051. And then, Item C2 will be acceptance of a 25-foot site triangle easement. Councilman Shadid. Anybody sign up to speak?
No.
There was no protest. It passed the Planning Commission unanimously. I move for approval. All right. We've got a motion in a second on Item 9C1. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Councilman Shadid, perhaps a motion on 9C2 as well?
Move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And now we're on Item 9D. This is an ordinance on final hearing, special permit to permit auto sales on the C3 Community Commercial District at 1215 North MacArthur. Councilman Mcatee.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? Could you give the council a brief overview of what you're trying to accomplish here? I appreciate it.
Yes. Like I said before, it's for 1215 North MacArthur property. I was trying to build a small car lot for automobile, used automobile sales. I used to do salvage business, recently went out of business, so it's something I'm trying to do for a living, basically ask your permission to do that.
And this is a car lot, not a salvage yard?
I'm sorry?
Not a salvage operation?
No, this is not a salvage operation. It's used car sales.
Okay. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. They approved it unanimously. Have anybody signed up? I've seen none. Unless there are questions from council, I move for approval.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. I think you may want to get his name and address for the record.
I haven't. He did.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item 9E, ordinance on final hearing. This is at 1339 Northwest 1st Street, rezoning from I-1 to S.P.U.D. 1040. Councilwoman Sawyer. This was, by the way, recommended for denial at Planning Commission.
Correct. So thank you, Mayor. This item was recommended for denial by both the staff and the planning department. And is the applicant here? Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. My name's Charles Allen. I'm with Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street. Walter De Leon's here also. His mother and uncles own the property. They purchased the property five years ago. One of the conditions was that it be rezoned so that they can continue truck, using it for truck storage, which is their family business. They've got a yard to the north of this on 1st Street. It's just kind of an overflow parking area. We met with Asa Highsmith at the site, tried to negotiate some improvements that included some landscaping on Northwest 1st Street and McKinley. Also, it included new sidewalks and side proof fencing. However, Planning Commission kind of sees this as a transitional area, probably for residential and so forth, but I'm not sure that's, I mean, that's not the De Leon's desire for the property, obviously. So with that, we're here to ask that be reconsidered and approved for the spud. If not, that the Leons are going to have to look for some other property and move from this property. It's going to take some time, and it'll probably sit vacant until somebody else comes in and develops.
Now, as you said, Mr. Allen, this is a neighborhood that is in extreme transition. There's sort of been unofficially designated as the Ironworks District, and it is residential in most of its character around this site. And I believe that we're here to make the selling change in response to a citation.
Correct.
And so in this particular case, I certainly agree with staff and with the planning department that this is an inappropriate use of that corner, and I would make a motion that we deny this application.
Councilwoman, may I also interject? There are two people who've signed up to protest.
Oh, all right. Great. I'm sorry.
May I recognize them?
Forgot to ask.
Sure. Scott Smith?
Mr. Smith, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address? Scott Smith, 715 North Hudson. We have the property directly to the north of that, which is zoned residential, and our intention is to probably do residential units on that. And we really feel that the trucking thing would absolutely devastate that area on that further.
Okay.
But that's kind of it.
That's good. Short and to the point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Ott.
All right. My name's Derek Ott. I live at 601 Northwest 15. I'm also the president of the Ironworks Development District Association. Been really excited over the course of the past few months to have tremendous participation in everything, from informal meetings to charrettes to other things. And in all of those, there has been a universal interest in making this a neighborhood that people can live in and work in and play in. When Roy Williams was speaking earlier, and he said that there's a lot of buzz about Oklahoma City, this is an area where, when new businesses come, this is one of the few areas that's an opportunity for tremendous growth west of downtown. One of the things that would devastate that, and would also devastate other things, is having this become a site or an area in which things just aren't taken care of. These are photos taken this past Friday at this site. You can see trash stacked up. You can see tires, tires, more tires. These tires hold water. That water is a wonderful breeding ground for mosquitoes, and it's interesting on a day when we're talking about this being Parks and Recreation Month. day when we're talking about this being Parks and Recreation Month that we've got children in the community after school program at Pilot Park. Expanding this site would put those kids further at risk. I would strongly suggest that you follow the lead of the Planning Commission and decline this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
This is a neighborhood that we've talked about a lot. We've got some complicated issues. The old Robertson Steel Plant is over there, but there's great activity going on. There's talk about kind of a art installation, fabric obscure, I think, factory obscure, going in over there. And being in this location just west of downtown, there's a tremendous housing stock of small, affordable housing that makes this a really attractive mixed-use neighborhood opportunity. And I just think it would be a mistake to allow this on that corner.
And is the outdoor storage, like it's being requested, is that an I-2 or an I-3 use?
It's really an I-2. Just a straight storage yard would have to be an I-3, but if you have some kind of business on the site, you can do it in I-2.
Okay.
This is kind of right on the edge, James. It's really pushing the envelope a little bit. There's no site-proof fencing at all. It's just open fencing, and it's a really unattractive nuisance in the neighborhood. Now, I would restate my motion. I think I've already made my motion to deny.
You've already made a motion on the table to recommend deny, or to deny, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, even a third. It appears you want to say one last thing.
Well, you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, that they've operated for five years, never had a complaint until recently. We went through Planning Commission, nobody showed up to protest at that time. This is kind of, you know, they purchased the property not knowing the difference between I-1 and I-2. And unfortunately, now, five years later, after operating without any complaints, they're going to be forced to move or continue getting violations anyways.
Mr. Allen, we've had a lot of letters submitted to us-
Okay.
-in protest of this application.
The planning staff never gave me any of them.
We, from time to time, do have folks come by who've purchased a piece of property without knowing what the zoning was, and that really, the onus of knowing that is on the person that purchased the property.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from council? All right, we've got a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and cast our votes. This is on the motion to deny, so a green vote is to deny the application. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9F1 and 2. We have under 9F2, a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District, which is Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 5. This is for commercial properties along northwest, southwest 25th, south side of southwest 24th, and the north side of southwest 26th. Item F1 is a public hearing in regards to item F2, and so in that regard, I would ask if there is anyone here to speak on this item. Seeing none, would open it up to the council, and I don't know if Councilman Stone, if you wish to make a motion.
Let's move the item.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second on 9F2. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G, ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for improvement in Special Services Assessment District Number 5 in the Capitol Hill Improvement District, et cetera. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Donna Zaventos out in the crowd. She does so much work down here in the Capitol Hill area. It's pretty amazing. But this area is just continuing to grow and reinvent itself and thrive, and I'm really excited that we're continuing on this path forward. So with that, I'd move for approval.
We've got a motion in a second, and I'll echo your comments. Capitol Hill is a very exciting area of Oklahoma City that is much closer to where we sit right now than a lot of people realize. It's just a mile or two away, and Donna and her folks down there are doing a great job, and we also enjoyed the recent mural dedication in the rain a couple of weeks ago, and we expect many more improvements in the years ahead. And with that, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on item 9G? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9H1, public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures that appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we'll move on to 9H2, resolution declaring that those structures are dilapidated. Is there a motion?
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9I1, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures as listed on the agenda minus item B, which the city manager already pulled. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of these items? Under the public hearing section, seeing none. Is there a motion for item 9I2? All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to 9J1, this is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, which are itemized on the agenda minus item B, which the city manager already pulled. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on items under 9J1? Seeing none, is there a motion for item 9J2? Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are at item 9K1. This is the second public hearing regarding the appropriations for the fire department. This was, I believe we had a presentation on this last meeting, so that is not necessary again, but is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing section of this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9K2, the resolution regarding these appropriations for the fire department. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9L1, this is the second public hearing regarding appropriations for the police department. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move to 9L2. Is there a motion for the resolution regarding appropriations for the police department for fiscal year 2018, 2019? Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. We already disposed of item 9M, and we are now on 9N. This is extension of collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI.
Mr. Mayor, as we do not have a new agreement for the next fiscal year, it's typical that we would extend the agreement until, for the next six months, or until we reach a new agreement, and there'll be a similar agreement following for FOP and IFF.
Right, this is totally standard operating procedure.
It is.
Okay. Is there a motion on 9N for AFSMI? Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O, extension of collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 123. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P, extension of collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 157. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we are at 9Q1, agreement in lieu of litigation with Q Sac Wholesale Meat Company. I'm told we do not need an executive session, so I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. This would approve the agreement in lieu of litigation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, so item 9R was previously stricken, which brings us to item 9S. I believe we will, in fact, exercise 9S2 and go into executive session to discuss a resolution authorizing and directing the municipal councilor to negotiate a legal service contract on behalf of the city for the purpose of filing litigation in response to the opioid epidemic, and we would need a vote to enter into executive session. So I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will go into executive session at the conclusion of our other business. And now we will go to 9T2, because we will need an executive session regarding a resolution authorizing the municipal councilor's office to settle the case of Giger v. City of OKC. We would need a vote to go into executive session, so I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll do that executive session at the conclusion of our other business. Moving to 9U1, we do not need an executive session, and so this is a resolution authorizing the municipal councilor's office to settle the case of Shockley v. City of OKC. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are now at 9V1, which I understand does not need an executive session. And we'll go with a, so this is a resolution authorizing the municipal councilor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Kirkland v. City of OKC. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item 9V1? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9W, we would like to go into executive session on this item. This is a resolution authorizing the municipal councilor to file an appeal in the Tenth Circuit in the case of Williams v. City of OKC. We need a vote to go into executive session. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will go into executive session on that item following our other business. We now go to 9X1, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here to speak on any of these claims recommended for denial? Seeing none. I do not believe we need an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9, we're still on X, right? Oh, no, item 10, 10A1. We do not need an executive session. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here to speak? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council on these items? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Before we move to items from council, there was an amendment to the city council agenda on Friday. This was, Francis, this was properly noticed? Correct, this is a part of the agenda. It just did not have a agenda item number. It is known as extra item, and it is a resolution authorizing the municipal councilor to file a lawsuit in Oklahoma County District Court requesting injunctive relief to require the property and to remove excessive accumulation of trash from properties at 2436 Northwest 42nd Street and 2440 Northwest 42nd Street, and to prohibit further excessive accumulation of trash on the properties. This is in Ward 2, but I don't know if Councilman Shadid is the right person to kind of brief us a little bit on this, or somebody else?
Well, we talked, this is the case that we talked about-
Yeah.
-a couple of weeks ago, and I don't, I don't know that anything's, we came, as Mark suggested, we came and cleaned up at that Wednesday, and then stuff's accumulating again right after. I'm not sure what, if there's, yeah.
We also arrested and jailed them on Thursday.
Okay.
And then, I think we cleaned up actually on Thursday, and then by the weekend it was pretty well reloaded.
So I'm not sure what, what mental issues, if there's mental illness. I'm not sure what the motive is on the part of, but I don't think anything else has changed. And so I'd ask for approval, the council, to, or move for approval to file this lawsuit.
Okay.
Well, and I should ask, I see, I didn't read ahead, item 2 is to file an action to foreclose the liens. Which would be preferable here, as I see this, or do we, are we doing both?
You could actually do both.
Okay.
We could do the action to, for the injunctive relief, and while we're doing that, start a foreclosure action on our lien.
Got it. So that'd be two separate. I'd say we want to pass both of them. Yeah, I'd, I'll move for approval, number one first.
Okay, and before we vote on that, we do have a gentleman who, one of the neighbors, who was here at the last meeting, Tom, if you wouldn't mind coming, you've signed up to speak. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and state your name and address.
James, Tom, love to see you. I live at 2505 Northwest 42nd Street, and I was here at the last council meeting with a couple of our neighbors from Ward 2. I want to thank the council for taking such proactive action with this. We did see a lot of activity and compliments to Mr. Locke and his folks in the abatement that has taken place since the last council meeting. I'm told that over five, or I guess five 40-yard roll-off boxes were taken from these subject properties, but I can report, a neighbor called me last night, and I think the code enforcement personnel can report just the same, that we're seeing the same behaviors again and seeing reaccumulation. So with that, on behalf of my neighborhood, I would request that the council approve both resolutions and help improve our neighborhood. With that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the table for extra item 1, which is the resolution authorizing the lawsuit. I think, do we have a second? Probably.
Yes.
Do we know anything about the homeowner?
I mean, what, did he have a response when he was arrested and?
I mean, something, yeah.
I can't answer that. I don't know. Okay. Did the homeowner have a response when he was arrested? Did he?
No, when we were out there, he was already out. So, I mean, he was out the next day, and when we were still cleaning, but they, but he was back, but he didn't make a comment to us about it. He was actually, the second day was fairly congenial with us. He was actually throwing stuff into the 40-yard dumpsters along with the contractor.
Well, Dan, maybe you can find some case management or some wraparound services to help this individual, because it sounds like we've got a serious problem.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion in a second on extra item 1. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And then we've got extra item 2, resolution authorizing the municipal councilor to file an injunction, I'm sorry, to file an action in Oklahoma County District Court to foreclose the liens against the properties at 2436 Northwest 42nd Street and 2440 Northwest 42nd Street and the owner of the properties for costs related to removal of excessive accumulation of trash by the city. Councilman Shadid?
Move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we will move on to item 11, items from council. And in this instance, before I go around the horseshoe for comments, we actually have some business to dispose of, so we might start there, and I think it would be most appropriate for the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, Councilman Stonecypher, maybe to walk us through this.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. The, these items deal with the appointment of judges, the appointment of a vice presiding judge, and the establishing of compensation for our judges. And what I'd like to say, especially as to Judge Austin, who is going to be our vice presiding judge and has been, and Judge Kiffin, they do a wonderful job. And we have a really good team of judges over at the courthouse that are working hard to lower the rate of people going to jail when they just can't afford to pay a fine. I think that's a tremendous service that these judges are working on, day in, day out. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of communication issues, but they are, they are really working hard to improve the system if they want to.
And Cat, I'd move for approval of item 11A.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second on item 11A. That's the resolution appointing Infred Austin as municipal judge. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. A motion on item 11B, this is resolution appointing Donald Kiffin as municipal judge.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11C, resolution designating Infred Austin as vice presiding judge.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11D, resolution establishing compensation and benefits for the positions of municipal judge, presiding judge, and vice presiding judge effective July 1st.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Eleven E, resolution appointing the names on the agenda to terms of offices beginning July first, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2020.
Your Honor, would you give me just one second to recuse one of these persons that is an employee at our firm?
Oh, okay. Certainly.
Now, I'm talking, I would move for approval.
Okay. We've got a, a motion and a second on eleven E. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously with Councilman Stonecypher not in the room. And that brings us to items from council, and I'll go around, start at Ward one.
I have a request. I, I would be very, very grateful if, I just have an interest in the, the part, the sale of our parking garages, specifically Santa Fe. I know that if, there's been previous reports that we're negotiating with Continental Resources and Harold Hamm about the sale, partial or complete sale. We've sold a lot of parking garages to large corporations that then take it out of the pool for the public to use. We sold City Center East to Devon. We sold Center City West to Mark Befford. We sold Broadway Kerr to Sandridge, and they, I think that one's quite empty at this time. But I would just hope that if we reach an agreement with an entity which some would, would characterize as heavy-handed, or bullying, or there are other adjectives that might be chosen, but if we could, if we could put that deal out to the public and let everybody kind of digest it for a while instead of, would that, David, would that go to COPTA first? And then, and then it would come to the council?
It's going to both items. We don't have the timeframe as, set as of yet.
But can we, can we let all of us digest it maybe before, like not put it on COPTA's agenda on Friday and then, and, but let everybody kind of see the deal and digest it for a little bit before it goes to COPTA? I'd, I'd just be grateful if we could do that.
I don't have any concerns with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do what we can on it. It's the.
Have a renegotiation or a dispute of orders?
We're still negotiating.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman Shadid? Councilman Neckety?
In the process of vetting our new councilman, my wife and I thought, maybe we'll drive by and see how he keeps, maintains his church property. And we did that on a Sunday afternoon. There was nobody on the property but us. And I've just got to say, what an example of light shining in darkness your campus is over there. And we were really impressed and we're, we're excited to have you on, on as the council. Thank you.
I, yesterday I had the opportunity with the Family Justice Center to attend Camp Hope. And I've got to tell you, Camp Hope is a camp for kids that have really faced a lot of trauma in their lives, been through things that no kid should ever have to go through. And this camp puts these kids together where, you know, they all have similar stories. And I would just implore any of you, when the opportunity arises to go to this camp, it's, it's just fantastic what they're able to do with these kids and hopefully, you know, potentially break some of these cycles. Hearing some of these kids' stories is heartbreaking, but it's also, it's very enriching when you see what they're able to overcome and what this camp is able to help them do. So, again, if any of y'all have the opportunity to go there, I'd certainly implore that you do it. I think it'll be well worth your while. And also, I just, I wanted to say again, congratulations, Councilman Cooper.
Thank you. Councilman Greenblatt?
Well, first of all, Your Honor, I want to compliment you on the tempo of today's meeting. You really have demonstrated a great experience in such a short period of time, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. And then Pastor Cooper, you have, we combined have taken a great step to restore credibility with your willingness to serve on the council, representing Ward seven, and I personally want to thank you for that willingness and look forward to working with you. And so, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I would add the same comments, rather than welcome. We're very happy to have you join this group. Look forward to working with you.
Excited.
Two, two things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we're excited about what's happening in our city on this week. We have the National Baptist Convention, USA. Some 25,000 people have descended upon Oklahoma City. It gives to us really a great opportunity to let our light shine as a city. People have come from all over the United States and Bahamas, and so we need to put our best foot forward, and thank you so much for your leadership as well and getting that done. And then, one final thing is that today is June 19th. It is a special time in our nation's history. This is, in fact, Juneteenth, which is, for some who may not know, Emancipation Proclamation was signed on January 1, 1865 by President Lincoln. That news did not get to Texas until General Granger showed up at Galveston, Texas to announce that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed. Slaves, slaves were free, and ironically, on this day, I'm sworn in to city council. And so I consider it a great honor and a privilege to be able to serve.
Thank you. Want to say welcome, welcome aboard. If there is anything I can do to help at that convention with 25,000 people, to come back to the new convention, please let me know.
And I'll just, yeah, echo everybody's words of welcome to you, Councilman Cooper. And, you know, we had some, some well-qualified applicants for this appointment, but it was just far and away, the positivity for you from, from people I spoke to in Ward seven was, it was just universal. It made it very, very easy, and we were grateful for your willingness to serve. And, and this is a, a nice, smooth transition, and we're, we're very pleased that you'll be able to so ably represent your constituents during this time. So thank you. Okay. We will move on now to city manager reports, and there is several, but one that involves a visitor, and that is 12A. Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Mayor, we have Maureen Hefferman here this morning to give us a presentation about all the good things that she and her, her group are doing over at the Myriad Gardens. Maureen, thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. Good morning. Well, I just wanted to share a lot of things that have been happening at the gardens since I've been here a year ago. And first and foremost, we, first and foremost, we are a botanical garden, which is basically an open space with labeled plants that has educational opportunities to learn about plants and gardens. So that's our number one mission. But we really are here to be a beautiful green spot for Oklahoma City, a beautiful garden, a place to relax, enjoy, learn, and have fun. So that is our number one job, to have a beautiful, safe, clean, green space for the city. I'll take you through a quick year in the life of the gardens, different things that we've done, and, and new developments that we've completed this year. So we always have a sense of continuous improvement at the gardens. This is our holiday lights. Every year, we try to do something different and new for the community to enjoy the holidays. Lots of events around the holidays. The ice rink, we had our best year yet last year. We had a little over 36,000 skaters, and this brings in significant revenues to the gardens, almost $130,000 towards our operating budget. And this really gets more and more popular every year. It's a great place for the community to make memories, enjoy the holidays. We do, we can't expand the rink, but we try to do other improvements at this point. These are skating aids, which have been really popular. We rent them out for an additional fee, and young kids and adults can learn to skate using them. We also have been doing curling, which, who knew, in Oklahoma City, there's a huge demand for this. They sell out every program. So we're trying to use the rink in different ways to offer new things and new healthy activities. Martin Luther King Day, we celebrate that and have great programs for the communities and performances. This year, we reached out to the Asian District, and it was the Year of the Dog for their New Year celebration. And so we had hundreds of people at the gardens with authentic dancers, and it was really terrific. So we hope to continue that each year with the Asian District. We do a orchid show in the spring. I wish more people, we, we have good crowds for this, but I wish more people would discover this, because we have a really terrific orchid expert on staff, and he puts together an exquisite show, and it really is a jewel for the city to discover in the spring. St. Patrick's Day, we have to celebrate that with the community. Our bulb show really has become a big event in the spring. We are working on a large matching grant to expand our bulb endowment. And I can't tell you the joy and thrill that this gives people. And we get thousands of people now coming just to walk through the gardens, enjoy it. It's, it's a very intoxicating atmosphere in the spring with these bulbs blooming and all the color. We do Easter egg hunts, very popular for kids. We've started to have events for kids who have different disabilities or sensory, sensitive issues, and those have proven to be very popular as well. Our dog Easter egg hunt is, is fun. Educational programs, we offer once, once a year, this wonderful symposium where we bring in nationally renowned speakers paired with local experts. And this year, we had an event that talked about how we can plan gardens that nurture nature and ourselves, and to be very sensitive about how we care for gardens and green space so wildlife can thrive in them. We did a OKC seed starting exhibit in our lobby, which attracted lots and lots of people, lots of schoolchildren. So they learned how to start seeds and grow seeds successfully, especially healthy crops, edible crops. This is our second year. We've, we've started the OKC Garden Fest in early May, and this has been our, we had thousands of people out for this. So lots of vendors selling plants and gardening equipment, programs about how to garden successfully, food trucks. So it really has become a nice festival. We have to earn money for the gardens, because we're a public, private partnership, as you know, so we're always trying to grow our revenues. So on the years that we don't do our Splendor in the Gardens event, we started this event where we've brought in a top-top arranger. We have a luncheon and sponsors and ticket sales, and we were happy to give scholarships to local students who are studying floral design. This is a new garden we're actually dedicating tomorrow, and Richard and Glenn and, Glenna Tonnenbaum have sponsored this. And it took a site which was really unused. We had some scraggly plants that weren't doing well, and we didn't have that whole space open. It was just some benches along the perimeter of the sidewalk in the foreground. So the Tonnenbaums and some other donors gave us the money to create this beautiful new shade garden, and we're calling it the Reflection Garden. And it's really been fantastic. We started building it last year. We finished it in the spring, and already people are using it all the time for lunches and just as another shady spot at the garden. There's a beautiful water feature, and it's really lovely. And when we build this garden, it's not only for just our general visitors to enjoy, but we design them so we can rent them, spaces for small rental events, so it adds a little more revenue that we can make for the gardens. So if you haven't seen that walkover, it's really beautiful. We've added new interpretive elements to our outdoor gardens, and we'll be adding more of these every year. Our head of horticulture writes these and produces these, and they're really terrific. And we'll be placing those all throughout the gardens, but we have a lot right now in our Prairie Garden. That's along Reno. Just a, a couple months ago, we got a gift from a local group of retired AT&amp;T workers, and they gave us $85,000 so we could purchase new play equipment, which will be able to be used by special needs children. We didn't have that before, so kids who were in wheelchairs or who couldn't walk well or support themselves sitting up. We now have three really fun pieces of equipment. This swing, we have this teeter-totter feature, and there's a merry-go-round specially made so kids can be wheeled right onto it. So we're really thrilled to offer this to people. And the, the fun thing about this is that adults use it too, so adults can be right in there with their children, having fun. And we're really grateful that the community now is coming to us and saying, what do you need? What could we do for you to keep, keep the gardens always improving? This is a, a big fundraiser that we do every other year. We just did this last month, and we netted about $175,000 for the gardens with all of our supporters. And we get support from all parts of the community, from corporate support down to individual dollars. And we really appreciate this support, because it allows us to do all the things that we want to. It was a really fun evening, and if you have a chance to come in two years, please do. We also have lots and lots of weddings in the garden, and it, it not only brings in some extra rental income for us, but it makes the gardens really lively and fun for people. And the community has really embraced it as a site to celebrate all kinds of life moments, but weddings are really popular at the gardens and, again, help us earn some revenue. We also do public rentals. This is the Goodwill Games. That was there last year. So we are always happy to talk to people if they want to bring an event or festival or something at the gardens. Pitchfork in the Park is our seasonal cafe. They opened last year. They're back again. They're doing very well. They cannot make enough popsicles to keep up with the demand, so they're a terrific place to enjoy a, something like this or, or a meal at the gardens. Dancing in the Gardens has returned, and this event is just one of the, the happiest, most joyful events in the city. We have literally several thousand people a night who enjoy these. We do these once a month in the summer. This is our salsa event. We had Indian dancing just last month. We have hip-hop coming up. We did this last year. And it is, it is one of the best places where the whole community mixes and has fun and dances together, and it's, it's, it's great. It's on the seasonal plaza of Pitchfork in the Park. And just check our schedule, one is coming up pretty soon. We just finished our Bringing a Book to Life Spring Festival. This, we get lots and lots of new members at this. We get some income, and we bring a book to life, and we encourage kids to read over the summer. So we had about 9,000 people over a 10-day period in this. Mud Day is coming up. This has been really popular. We encourage kids to have fun and play in the mud. And last year, and I think they're coming back this year, the fire department came out with overhead hoses to hose the kids down after they got dirty, so that's been kind of fun. We, as I said, we're always trying to improve things, keep things looking as beautiful and well-kept as possible, so we are in the process of upgrading the surfacing below our popular thunder fountain kids use. For a lot of our events and programs, we use volunteers to get things done, and our volunteer program has been growing. We have Shakespeare in the Park. And our summer movie nights are starting tomorrow night for the summer, so they bring out thousands of people every night on Wednesdays in the summer to enjoy a movie on the Great Lawn. The Twilight Concerts, which the Arts Council puts on on Sunday nights, those are going through the end of August every Sunday at 7:30 on the Great Lawn. And we put on the Myriad Gardens Signature Concert every year, and last year, we were really thrilled to bring in Dom Flemmons. He is an internationally renowned Americana artist, and he specializes in African-American cowboy music. And he was terrific. He was, he is associated with the Smithsonian and a scholar with them, and we brought him in last year, and he was just fantastic. And this year, we're bringing in an Oklahoma talent, Parker Millsap, for a September concert. So these are free and open to the public, thanks to corporate support to offer them. Our Fall Festival, which has gained thousands and thousands of visitors every year, it makes a lot of money for the gardens, and it really is a wonderful event for kids and families. We, this was a new program last year. We're going to repeat this and grow this. In November, we worked with Cox Communications, and it was called Tree for All, and we had 1,200 trees that we bought from nurseries at a very low price. We gave away several hundred free trees, and then the rest we sold at a very low price, five and $10 for, is really great selection of trees that will thrive in Oklahoma. And it was really wonderful to see people leaving with trees that we knew would go out and green the city. So we want to do this again. We'd like to hold a satellite giveaway, perhaps in Capitol Hill area this fall. But it was really great to see all these trees going out, helping to green Oklahoma. So we'd like to continue this every year and help green the city and encourage tree planting. In our last fiscal year, in that entire year, we served through all the various programs, and I just showed you just a slice of what we do. We do a lot of other things throughout the year. But from what we can actually count and what we estimate from all of our events, or, or public rentals, private, visitors to the Crystal Bridge, we have almost 250,000 people who take part in some kind of program. And that doesn't include the casual visitor. So we, we do serve a lot of people throughout the year. As you've probably heard, we'll be the site of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade John Rec School Expansion, starting in July. They are actively at work right now, and I'll just show you, this, the, the green-colored area is our lower level in the Crystal Bridge, which we, we did use, we do use for some programs. We rented it for wedding receptions and things like that, but it was somewhat underused. And so when Dr. Pierce came to me and wondered if we'd be open to having that as a school, we thought about it, and we said yes. We thought it, it would kind of serve a higher and better use for the school to use it. It would give us an amazing opportunity to work with the kids throughout the year and expose them to plants and gardens. expose them to plants and gardening. They can plant bulbs in the fall. They can plant seeds in the spring. And just have this beautiful atmosphere to go to school in. And the learning model that they're using, that this type of open space works very well for that. So as we speak, there are contractors there now making adjustments to it so it's safe, it has the proper security, and it will also work well for a school site. This is a hallway that they'll be using into the space. This is one of the classrooms that they'll be using. This is our water stage room. So the kids, the teachers will be moving in in mid-July. And then I think it's the first week of August, the kids will be there. So that's going to be really fun to incorporate them into Myriad Gardens. In addition to that lower work, we got major gifts from the Innismuch Foundation to help fund that lower work, as well as add a new classroom on our upper level in our lobby space, because we'll be losing that for our programs that we do. And we also got a large gift from Devon Energy so we could renovate our south lobby and add a new classroom. So we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks. The south lobby will be closed until probably about Thanksgiving. And when it's finished, we'll have a beautiful new south lobby. It will be a much better venue for, as a visitor's center. We can rent it more. It can serve as a lecture hall for us. It will be really upgraded gallery space. We have art shows there all the time. And I think it will be another really wonderful space that the city can use, that people can use as a venue. And it will work much better as a visitor's center as well. So those are some renderings of what that will look like. This is the new classroom we'll be building. And then we do have plans down the road to renovate the rest of the Crystal Bridge. So all of the interior spaces can be upgraded like the outdoor space was almost eight years ago. And I'll just conclude with some of our financials. I'm happy to say we're doing very well. Our annual budget for all of our expenses is about 4.2 million. We're a little under expenses so far, which is good. And just so you know, Oklahoma City gives us about $1.8 million a year as a management fee, so for us to manage the gardens. And that number has been going steadily down since the foundation took over operations in 2012. We earned through all of the various programs and events and things that we do, a little over $1.3 million in earned revenue. And then through our fundraising, we raised over $1 million. And I'm happy to say with our festival that just concluded and some other gifts, we will exceed our fundraising goal for this year. So we expect to end this current fiscal year with a very modest surplus. So we're, we're doing well in our agreement with the city to increase our share of the budget, and the city's share has been steadily reduced over the past few years. So in the next fiscal year, in fiscal year 19, the city will be paying 42% of our annual budget, down from 76%. And we will be covering at least 58% of our annual budget. So the, the city will be paying about, I think it's $65,000 less next year than this year. So hopefully, every year, we will see that decline, too. And we, our goal is to reach over 60% in what we do to fund our annual budget. And looking ahead, we will be, we were just thrilled and delighted to be asked to take on the Scissor Tail Park Management. So we're looking ahead for that, and that will be opening next summer. And I'd be happy to come back and do a special report on that if you'd like. Thank you.
I just wanted you to know, in December, I took up the Curling Workshop. I signed up for it. And not only was I horrible, but I was also sore, very sore the next day.
It's very difficult.
And the reason, the reason I bring that up is I wanted to compliment you on the great creativity exhibited in the programs. There's so many different programs, and I wanted to thank you and your staff for providing all those different options. I had so much fun. I'm going back next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen, I really would like to compliment the staff as well. I see Chuck Smith, your CFO, that they do such a great job. Winnie the Pooh was just knocked it out of the park. So many kids enjoying it. Splendor in the Gardens was a beautiful event, and it is, everything you take on is done really well. And I know you use a lot of volunteers, but it takes great staff to manage all that.
Well, the staff, they're very dedicated, they're very creative. And when they see the joy of what they do out in the community, it just makes them work harder. They're a great group. Thanks.
Thank you, Maureen. Thanks, Ray.
I just have one question.
Oh, Maureen.
Yeah, just on the Scissor Tail Park component. So that's, so we're one year away from opening. Is that correct?
We are about one year away from the contractors being completed. And we, the Scissor Tail Park Foundation, will be officially taking on the management operations when the contractors are officially gone and completed. So we'll be taking that on. If they're on schedule, from what, what I'm hearing, they should be done in early June.
So the Scissor Tail Foundation, is it a subsidiary of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, or they've become one, or how?
We've actually, they're, they're separate. I mean, there's obviously relationships, but it will be a separate 501(c)(3) organization. What we've created is a parks management company, which is also a nonprofit, which is kind of the umbrella group that manages Myriad Gardens and Scissor Tail Park. So they'll, they'll be separate budgets, separate operations.
So about a year out, what, what's your latest estimate of the annual operating expenses of Scissor Tail Park?
I would think that it's going to be very similar to Myriad Gardens. I would think it would be a little under $4 million a year, something like that. It kind of depends on the number of programs that we do and things like that. But I think the, the operating budget, I would say, would be close to about $4 million. And then, like Myriad Gardens, we will be growing that earned revenue part and the fundraising part of it. So over time, I think we will, I don't know what that percentage will be, but I know we can raise significant amounts through earned revenue and donations each year. So the city's share will be reduced every year.
Four million for the, for the upper park, for phase one?
Uh, yes, about that.
So that would, that would increase with construction of the lower park?
I think at that point, I don't think so, because by then, the, the lower park should be opening in about two years after the upper park opens. By that time, I would see us have making pretty good progress on earned revenue and donations. So that may be, it's, it's hard to say right now, but I would like to think that that number wouldn't substantially increase from that if we're able to be successful in all the earned revenue operations, which we have there, which will be, I think, significant between rentals and the boathouse and the cafe and programs that we'll do and concerts and festivals. And at that scale, which is a larger scale, I would think that we could make a real dent in what the city is funding that every year.
Your private donations are right at a million. How does that compare to previous years? Is that going up, staying the same?
That is going up a little bit.
And so would, in the future, would people have a choice to donate to which park they wanted to, or those are combined? Or how do you see two parks influencing private donations?
Well, it's, you know, there is, there is a finite pool of donors and corporations. So in some ways, it competes with that. And yet, I think there is a lot of excitement and goodwill for that project, that people want to be associated with it. And so I, I don't think there's going to be, I think people are going to contribute to both. And I think we're going to find new donors and new companies and new opportunities at Scissor Tail, because we'll have, we'll have another fundraising staff for that. So they'll be out fundraising as well, new donors that are outside our current group right now. So I, I'm very optimistic that we'll, we'll do very well with earned revenue and our fundraising.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We also have the Sales Tax Collections Report for June. June is the final month of our fiscal year. If you take a look at the total collections today, June was a good month. If you take a look at the final projections or revenues to date versus projections, we're up 3.6%. That's adjusted with the new sales tax, so that's pretty strong. If you remember Russell Evans at the Budget Workshop, he said that in the second quarter of '18 or the fourth quarter of our fiscal year, same quarter, there would, there would be a pretty good recovery. And he, as he generally does, he pretty well nailed it. So it's, it's good progress for us, and so we're pleased with the numbers.
One item that was interesting to me, there's an article in the newspaper yesterday that compared Oklahoma City's growth with some of the surrounding municipalities. And in previous years, we were lagging behind the growth that we saw in certain communities such as Midwest City, Moore, Edmund, Yukon. This past year, we more than doubled the growth than what the other communities were generating. So I think that speaks very well for the city of Oklahoma City. And I'm optimistic that our revenue growth will continue to be strong going forward. And there's no way, but it'll continue to help with these additions, such as the Amazon Fulfillment Center, the business up there on North Broadway, MEG, and other economic opportunities. I, I think the future is very bright for the city of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
I do feel the need to channel our former colleague, Pat Ryan, that would remind us that it comes in cycles. This is a good time, but there are other times that could follow. So we just, I certainly appreciate the conservative approach that we take in managing good times as well as bad times.
Is that why you announced your retirement council?
That's.
She's been here for several cycles. Could I share a comment on sales, just on what you guys were saying? I'm still struck by how much of our sales tax comes from people outside of Oklahoma City, with Roy Williams saying it's like 30 to 40%. The $25,000 at the convention obviously is going to have a huge impact. But the number of people that are coming into Oklahoma City every day for medical care is like that, is thousands and thousands and thousands of people. At the Health Science Center alone, people go into the VA every single day. It is thousands and thousands of people. And I just wonder if we can start to, I know we have the announcement of an Innovation District, new head. I wonder if we can kind of think about, in the years ahead, strategically locating retail where all these thousands and thousands of people are coming in every day for their health care. And priority number one would be the Health Science Center, because so many people from outside of Oklahoma City are coming there every single day. Just a thought. Thank you.
Ed, you know, that's an interesting point, not just for medical care. It's hard for us who grew up and lived in Oklahoma City all of our lives to think of it as such an attractive place. But my wife grew up in Winniwood, Oklahoma, and Oklahoma City's kind of a big deal. And, you know, the further out you get and the smaller the community that you live in, it's, it's a big deal. And shopping is still very important to individuals to come to Oklahoma City for shopping purposes.
Right.
Anyway, we sometimes forget that.
Any other comments on the Sales and Use Tax Collections Report? Okay. And then Item 12(c) can be found online under the packet, if you'd like to look at the claims and payroll. Anything else, Mr. Couch? Citizens to be heard. We've had no one sign up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none. We have executive sessions already approved for Item 9s2, 9t2, 9w2. We will now go proceed with that, and we will return. nine W two. We will now go proceed with that and we will return.
All right, we have returned from executive session. We were back there for three items on the agenda. I'll take them in order. Nine S, it was one, a potential resolution, and two, executive session. So nine S, one is stricken from the agenda, and the municipal councillor's office has been directed to give some further thought to this, and we will discuss it again at our next meeting, July 3rd. There should, we anticipate, an item on that agenda in regards to the potential for a lawsuit in response to the opioid epidemic. And then item nine T one, a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor's office to settle the case of Giger v City of O K C. I would entertain a motion.
We've got a motion in a second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And then that leaves us with item nine W two. This is, actually, nine W one, a resolution authorizing municipal councillor to file an appeal in the Tenth Circuit regarding Williams v City of O K C. I would entertain a motion.
The resolution authorizing the appeal.
Got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.